I'd like to call the order, the study session for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mike Orilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Jerry Swett.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Joe Wizwati.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
All right, moving along, item A, we have the Bill Jarvis here from the Safety Board, or the Safety Village, the Tri-Town Safety Village, if you can come up and...
Good evening, council members. Put this down a little bit. I'm requesting help from the town of St. John again. You guys have been real strong for the last sixteen to eighteen years. I've been there fourteen years. And this year is more important than ever. The reason for that is we are going to be teaching more children than ever. Lake Central has agreed to have second and fourth grade and possibly some third graders. Because of COVID, there's a lot of students that kind of missed the program, and so we're playing catch-up. We've talked with the superintendent of primary grades, and it's very important that they get this instruction. I mean, there's nowhere in Northwest Indiana that gives this type of instruction. Police, fire, railroad safety, and gas and electric safety in the home sponsored by NIPSCO. We have a lot of corporation that are helping us, but it still takes the basic budget to be taken care of so that we can have a good program and not falter at all. Our overhead is kept to a minimum, the best that we possibly can, and still keep the doors open. I mean, NIPSCO has gone up, water has gone up, all the items, insurance has raised, but we're still maintaining as best as we can. And just a few tidbits, the population of St. John by the two thousand and twenty census was twenty-one thousand four hundred and forty-eight, growing every year leaps and bounds, as you know. The cost per person is one dollar and sixty-three cents to have the Safety Village in tax dollars. And that may save one life in the town of St. John because of the life teachings that we give. In fact, Don Wheaton, one of our fire personnel is in the room tonight. She could even explain how badly it's needed for children to learn how to get out of a burning home, as well as Chief Laduke. We would appreciate St. John continuing their support. We would also hope that St. John police officers could come when we have the St. John schools, which, if you looked at our agenda, the St. John schools are the first ones that are coming. They signed up first and foremost. So we want interaction with the police officers so the children recognize and will acknowledge police officers and go up to them when they need help. I'd be glad to answer any questions there are about the Safety Village. Pretty much same old, same old, but we're going to be busier than ever.
Why did they skip third grade? Two and four?
It's always been second and fourth grade. Second grade, we give the initial training. Fourth grade, it's a review, and the children have evolved and are learning more. So we review what was done in second grade, then move on from there.
It just seems rather surprising that you don't include third to kind of refresh what they learned when they were in second, to kind of follow up to third and then step up into fourth.
It's not a bad idea, but there's not that many days open in the schedule to accommodate second, third, and fourth. Fourth is important because they're maturing pretty well. They're starting to wear earbuds, walking along railroad tracks, and we teach them the do's and don'ts. They start playing with matches and things that we would hope children don't do, but they do do.
What's the justification short of inflation? What's the justification for going from twenty-seven thousand to thirty-five thousand? That's an eight-thousand-dollar jump from last year, and your last year was a jump from the year before. So you're looking at an eight-grand increase.
Yes, it's eighty-eight-hundred. If you look at the breakdown of the budget, I have the comparison, I handed out, of two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. And all the increases are marked accordingly. It's in that file folder I had given you. And there's nothing, you know, that much out of line.
Out of line from what, Bill?
From last year.
But last year was the same thirty-five grand, was it not?
Uh, let me look at...
I believe it was.
Last year's total budget was ninety-four seven-eighty?
No, no. What we donated, what we contributed, it was thirty-five grand last year, was it not?
You know, I...
It'd been a third of whatever that ninety-four thousand was.
Beth, do you know what it was last year?
I do.
I'm sorry, I should have wrote that number down.
It was thirty-four four ninety-nine.
I'm sorry, what?
Thirty-four four ninety-nine.
Close enough, thirty-five grand.
Yep.
And then the year before, it was twenty-seven five.
That is correct.
Why?
You had COVID involved, so we weren't expensed as much. NIPSCO wasn't used as much because that many classes were not in attendance.
Well, then, justifiably, you ought to be able to say, we could reduce the third, the twenty-seven-five jump to thirty-five because of COVID and to cover expenses because you weren't generating revenue. However, the thirty-five grand last year, with generating more revenue, you should have dropped that number and not kept it stable, should you not have?
Well, not necessarily. When you look at it, when we have the classes there, our expenses go up. You know, water goes up because they're using restrooms. Electric definitely jumps. Insurance, because we have to tell the insurance company how many children we're servicing. So it's just progressional that it goes up. There's not a lot I can cut from this budget.
So I know it's a wonderful thing, for sure. I'm just trying to understand the cost better, too, making sure it wipes Stewart's over dollars. So last year, so this year is thirty-five, last year was thirty-five as well. So two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one was twenty-seven five, do I understand that correctly? And then how about two thousand and twenty? Do you know what we contributed in two thousand and twenty?
It was twenty-five grand, I believe.
It was twenty-five thousand?
I think you're right, Brian.
I think it was fifteen, but...
No, no, that's Dyer.
Yeah, I know Dyer's fifteen, but... So I will say, that's a tremendous jump in percentage of cost. So twenty-seven five to thirty-five is thirty-seven, twenty-seven percent increase. So inflation's only eight, ten?
Yeah, it's not just inflation, though, it's the number of kids that come through. The Sherrville, Dyer, and St. John have been growing by leaps and bounds, which is more kids. More kids means more come through the program, which is going to cost you a little bit more money. I think the fact that he held the budget as tight as he did, I think it's a good budget.
Do you know what increase? Do we have a twenty-seven percent increase in...
He just has the increases right here.
It's not twenty...
Well, that's a twenty-six-seven percent increase.
It's a ten percent, ten point five percent increase, which, when you look at an increase in students, I don't think that's out of line.
Well, you're closer to it than we are, Jerry, so your evaluation's better than ours.
And then it's a ten percent increase, so your budget, I'm looking for your budget last year, this year is about a ten percent increase.
That is correct, and we tried to cut it absolutely as much as possible. But again, our attendance is a lot higher. This spring session is going to be the largest ever.
One quick question on your budget, then. So I noticed in two thousand and twenty-two budget, the health insurance part was, and it doesn't have actually a cost there, it's dropped, and then other expenses are added in at six thousand. What is the difference here? What is other expenses? And it seems to be next to leases in line with the health insurance, I know it's related to that. What is, do you know what that cost is, or can you explain that?
Let me get to the column that... Other compensation, what that came down to was the FICA and Medicare. Those also had raises. Unemployment compensation, we don't pay any, but other personal services is broken down by the Safety Village started paying part of my health insurance for Medicare and all that.
Okay, so that's health insurance cost?
That is correct.
Okay. Six thousand.
That's not completely it because I only get like five hundred dollars a month.
I can understand, probably health insurance, if you have a family, is twenty-five thousand at least a year, so...
Well, they only pay on me, not my family at all.
Just you, okay. Thank you for explaining that.
No problem. That's what I'm here for, I mean, I try to make it as transparent as absolute possible.
Do you have an idea, what is the increase in enrollment, let's say, over the last three years? Do you have a number of that? Because that imminent, what you're saying makes sense, so we have a cost. I mean, I understand inflation happens, and now you have an increasing enrollment, that all makes sense. That speaks to the increase.
That's true, and also it's hard to give you a percentage because we fought COVID where students weren't coming until Lake Central released them to come to us.
Understood.
So that number would be skewed by the fact of COVID. Now, what's coming this year is huge, and I can't do a comparison. I could judge it on last year, but fall of last year and spring of this year are somewhat close, but there's probably about an eighteen percent increase.
Eighteen percent.
Mm-hmm. And I do have a schedule of all the students that are going to be already signed up for this year. And so far, not complete, is seventeen classes.
Okay, I'm satisfied, thank you for your explanation.
Oh, no problem.
That's certainly sensible, thank you.
Yeah, I just can't explain away COVID because it just, like Central said, not right now. But now they're coming back with vengeance on a lot of schools.
Anybody else have any questions? For Mr. Jarvis? Thanks for your time.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is the West Ninety-third Avenue Forty-One Project. We have a representative here from First Group.
Yeah. Evening, Town Council. Joe and Mr. Wizwati invited me here this evening to talk about the CE agreement for our Ninety-third project. In order to help with some of the funding, we went and split the CE agreement percentage-wise between the water main portion of the project and the roadway portion of the project. So I'm here tonight to present the roadway portion of that dollar amount. It is two hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. That is a, what would be a worst-case approximation of what may be needed in case the contractor aggressively hits the schedule to meet his deadline in December. Now that we're getting started here in roughly April or so. On our Ninety-sixth project, we did not bill off to a hundred percent of our construction engineering numbers. So I just want to present that to you, that this is, usually we try to go worst-case scenario with some of these projects. There's, in fact, only about a hundred and fifty working days from now until December. So unless the contractor really aggressively hits a six-day work schedule and we need two guys out there, we likely will not hit this total dollar amount. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this dollar amount or the project in general.
Anybody have any questions?
The water main, you said, is only two fifty-four?
The...
No, that's the...
The roadway amount is the two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
The water main portion of the contract, if you'd like that for your knowledge, is roughly eighty grand.
How much?
Eighty grand, which percentage-wise broken down is about twenty-four percent of the total dollar amount. So that's how we kind of broke down the CE agreement numbers.
I thought it would make more sense to have one specific to the road project and one specific to the water main project because they're doing two separate things, they're two separate entities should be paying for those.
Right.
When do we take possession of that house or the property?
So currently, the church is under review of the buying documents.
Yeah.
I was told it would be about last week, they were finishing up their review of those items. As soon as they sign those documents, it's my understanding that the house is yours.
Right.
So we're...
Soon as they get the check, you mean?
As soon as they, yeah, as soon as they get the check. So we should have more information this Friday. We're having a pre-construction meeting regarding this project. The church has been invited to, so we should have better information on where they're at with actually signing all of their documents.
And what I was getting at, Joe, was the house, once it's ours, that air conditioning unit or the furnace is relatively new. So if we can donate that to a family, somebody in town or a church family, the evergreens that are out there are big. I don't know if we can pick them up, move them, and put them somewhere in a park, but there's three or four beautiful evergreens out there between the house and the roadway.
I don't think that would be a problem at all.
It's all going to become the town's once those documents are signed. If that's an expense that you guys wish to incur, it's definitely something that can be done.
Or if we wanted to have public works, you know, go dig it out, yeah.
Well, you need a tree spade.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Those are pretty big evergreens, but they're beautiful.
Yeah.
And if we can put them somewhere else, that would be great.
Is there anything else salvageable in that house?
The fire department has made me aware this evening, they'd like to use the house for trainings as well as...
Can't burn it.
As well as the police department.
Just be careful.
Father Maletta would not like that.
I was just going to say, I don't think that's advisable.
No.
That's right in the corner.
Then there may be other items of recyclable...
No, I was just curious as to whether there was anything else salvageable.
I mean, other than the furnace and maybe AC, I think that's probably, you know, all that you'd probably get out of, maybe the copper pipes and stuff like that for scrap. But, yeah.
But the cost of removing them and such, you know, too.
That's why you got to have someone there that's eager to go in there and get it, so, yeah.
Well, I think that, once the house becomes ours, you set a timeline before the demolition. If anybody wants something, go in there and get it.
Yep.
Once the timeline's done, thing comes down, and it's over with.
That's right.
We need to move along, right?
All right. Any other questions?
This will be on the council's agenda at the regular meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is health insurance. We have Rob Adler from Myers-Galeros.
Thank you, council. Do you all have this info sheet here?
I don't believe they do.
No, we don't.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. But it's one of the reasons why we sent you here.
All right. So once again, my name's Rob Adler with Myers-Galeros Group. We're a local, locally-owned, operated insurance benefits firm here in Maryville, Indiana. Lifelong resident in Northwest Indiana. Future resident of St. John here at the end of this month, as a matter of fact. So Matt Galeros and myself, we work hand-in-hand on kind of evaluating plans. We handle a myriad of municipality plans, as well as hundreds of small-to-mid-sized businesses across the region. We had the opportunity to kind of review the breakdown of how you guys, this plan is set up, and we have a few recommendations, so I kind of want to go over that this evening. The biggest thing, first and foremost, as part of our recommendation, is that we are not recommending any change when it comes to any other aspect of the plan aside from stop-loss. And I'll kind of run through why here in a second. But for the purpose of the employees and the town administration, we're recommending keeping the same TPA, still BAS Health Comp, which is your, who processes your claims, polls claims and everything like that. Same network, Cigna, pharmacy benefit, Cigna. No change to plan design or any of the dental vision disability benefits that the town provides to the employees. So really, nothing changes from the aspect of the employee. As a matter of fact, they'll keep the same ID card. As we were going through kind of the mechanics of the plan, a couple of things jumped out at us, which we felt were somewhat concerning, and so we want to address those items here tonight. The one that's right in everyone's face here, so your stop-loss insurance that the town purchases to protect the town against the large claimants. So there's two types of stop-loss. There's your specific stop-loss, as well as your aggregate stop-loss. Specific stop-loss really protects the town from any one individual claiming over a certain deductible level and reimburses the town for any claims over fifty-five grand. The aggregate stop-loss is the stop-loss that covers the town from any number of smaller claims that add up over the course of the year, so it puts a cap on those claims, so your max exposure for the year. So the biggest thing was your stop-loss renewal basically gave you the biggest increase that they were contractually allowed to do at darn near fifty percent. So we definitely need to address that, as well as the contract language in the aggregate stop-loss. So I'll do my best to explain it in a simple way. Currently, the town really has an unlimited risk when it comes to the aggregate stop-loss, and it's for the reason that it's called a twelve-twelve contract. Okay, so a twelve-twelve contract means that for any, any claims that can be counted, can be protected against for that annual amount have to be incurred in twelve months and then also paid within the same twelve months. But we know that's not how claims run. If an employee goes for services at a hospital, there's usually a lag of two to three months before that claim even gets paid. So what we're recommending is to reset the stop-loss contract to what's called a twenty-eight, and that would give the town protection and begin capturing the claims credit beginning from May first of two thousand and twenty-two, all the way through the end of this calendar year for any claims that were paid from May first up to the end of the year. So it gives you that tail coverage to be able to capture reimbursement from that stop-loss contract. So that's number one. Number two, you know, to help with proper budgeting from a calendar year, fiscal year perspective, going to this twenty-eight contract would actually allow us to renew your stop-loss contract on January first, which would give a good lead time to be able to budget instead of trying to set budgets at the beginning of the year when costs change on May first. So we felt that that could be helpful for budgeting purposes with the goal of renewing the stop-loss again on January first. The other item was the retiree coverage. So our understanding in the plan document is that retirees are covered on the plan. There's not many of them, if maybe one. But there is no stop-loss coverage for retirees at this point. We couldn't find it in the contract. It actually explicitly says not covered unless otherwise outlined in the, in sort of an addendum. So we definitely want to correct that. That exposure is really unlimited if a retiree covered on the plan would have a high claim.
And the only time we'd have a retiree on that is if it's a public safety, which is required by law, until they turn age sixty-five. So that was one of the concerns that kind of raised my eyebrows in terms of, we don't have any, it just, we just pay and pay and pay. That doesn't make sense, so... We definitely would have a situation where if we had other retirees joining that plan, that would just increase our exposure. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to take a look at putting an aggregate amount on there.
Yep. Yep, and then last but not least, our assumption and from what we could see in the contract is that the current advisor is paid a percentage of the stop-loss premium, ten percent commission. So our philosophy as consultants is that we typically would go on a fee-based arrangement because we want to align ourselves properly, where we're not getting a raise if you guys are paying more premium. So that would be a recommendation that we would want to correct as well. So our fee to manage all aspects of the St. John plan would be a flat twenty-five hundred dollars a month, which is, whereas the current advisor is renewing the plan at approximately four thousand dollars a month in stop-loss commission. So that would, in turn, all aspects of this, setting up the new stop-loss, correcting the contracts, managing any aspect of the plan, you know, all the ancillary benefits, town meetings, benefit, you know, marketing, anything that you guys currently need and utilize, we would step in in that role. And we've got a team of people that would work hand-in-hand to do that for you guys. And then lastly, at the bottom, just, you know, again, since we're really just focusing on correcting that stop-loss, the kind of cracks in that foundation before we can, you know, really start getting control of some of the claim aspect. But that's purely just the stop-loss premium, that chart at the bottom. So it shows your current stop-loss contract with ISU, the renewal at fifty percent. And then we've got a firm offer from Accurisk with the same terms other than just that twenty-eight contract adjustment on the aggregate, coming in at eight point seven-three percent lower than your current spend there. So all in all, we feel like that's kind of our first step in, you know, creating a long-term relationship, managing the town's plan. Happy to answer any questions, I know it's a lot, try to keep it as precise as possible.
Could you explain in a little more detail again, go through the aggregate, the difference between the twelve-twelve and the twenty-eight?
Yep, yep. So, for example, right now, being that it's a twelve-twelve contract that runs from May first to May first, right? We're at a perfect example time right now, it's March. So if the town has been accumulating claims all the way since May, but there's a large claim that hits right now that puts you guys into that position where you could be receiving aggregate reimbursement, you hit the max, you hit the worst-case scenario for the year. This big claim that happened in March would not be accumulated for the next year. So there's kind of this, like, there's this weird period of time where you're not getting credit for the claim that's starting to be incurred now, they're doing the service, but it's not being paid until the next contract year when everything resets.
Okay, thank you.
So, like, still not clear on that, so then twenty-eight, what does that mean, twenty slash eight?
So twenty, the twenty number is the incurred period. So the reason why we recommend setting it at twenty is if we're going to, if the council is in agreement with kind of getting on that...
Twenty months, twenty months.
Twenty months, correct, yeah. If they're in agreement to do the reset for fiscal and budgeting purposes on a one-one, we want to take one-one of twenty-four, look back twenty months. Any claims that were incurred in that period and paid by the end of the year would be included in that aggregate stop-loss. And therefore, if you hit the max, anything over the max, you're going to get reimbursed back. So it protects you, it puts a real cap on that, on that risk.
So my understanding, so it just extends it from twelve months for that, for the cost of, your risk or whatever, with those charges for that health insurance, sends it from twelve months to twenty months?
Correct, yeah, and it's looking...
And what's the eight months in there?
The eight months is from five-one to the end of this calendar year. And that's just because that's the period, that those, any claims that were incurred in that twenty-month run period would be, that are paid in the eight, would be eligible for stop-loss reimbursement.
So then what do you anticipate? So we do this, that gets us through the end of this year, and now next year, we're going to not have the eight anymore, we're going to twelve.
Correct, yeah.
What is that going to do to our, what will that do to our rates?
Right, so then it would, we would reset it to either an eighteen-twelve or a fifteen-twelve. So actually, you know, that's a factor that would actually help the rates because they're really not, they're not accruing claims as long. So, but, you know, it's all dependent on how the plan's running, what the risk is at that time, and we typically start marketing that, you know, in August. So we'd have a good runtime before, to present you guys with some numbers and stuff. And we're confident, we usually, I mean, we have access to any possible stop-loss vendor that's out there, so we can usually bring at least some viable options year over year. And the thing about stop-loss is really it's, there's nothing, when it comes to that, there's nothing employee-facing. It's really just the reimbursement that sits behind to protect the town against those big claims. So any changes... So any changes of that, there's, there's really no, there's no disruption to the employee, the end user, and really even administratively. So it's a, it's an, it's a fairly easy switch to add your, to, to kind of correct the, the problem, kind of lay that good foundation, and then as we move forward, we can work together to kind of, you know, flatten claims, you know, see what can be done to reduce claims and things like that, because that's the biggest part of your spend anyway.
So from an accounting standpoint, things will function the same? BAS would still be our third-party provider? The stop-loss will still function the way it currently is? It's just a contractual difference?
Yep. And a different person to pay for the stop-loss?
Okay.
Yep. That's correct. And no commission in it?
Administratively, it's, it's pretty trade, I mean, it's the same, yeah.
All right. Anybody else got any questions?
Now just let the council know we'll be taking action on this, so we'll have all of us ready to go for the next council meeting.
Very good. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Rob.
All right. Chief LaDuque.
Good evening, everybody.
Kevin, you win, you win tonight's, I have the most paper award.
You're welcome.
You're the biggest pack of by far.
All right, well-
You win big time.
I aimed to please, or not please. So first up, we're talking about the emergency operations plan. So I don't expect any action on this, you just got a bunch of paperwork on it, but I'm just going to explain it at a very high level and we can go through, and then we can talk later on it. So just some quick highlights on emergency operation plan. Currently, our disaster plan is from 1996. It's here. It's what I think is a typewriter. I've never seen one of those in my life, but the typewriter would look like.
That's great.
I went through, not me, but I enlisted Jason's help. We looked everywhere, or he looked everywhere digitally to see if we have a copy of that. We can't find it. This may be the only copy that we have, but our current one is from 1996. So the plan in front of you is more than certainly updates that plan. Will complement our MHMP, which is your multi-hazard mitigation plan, which we, as a town, adopted in 2022. Last year, it was developed in 2019. This plan will also complement the general orders of the police department and the standard operating guidelines of the fire department. So after 9/11, the federal government made some sweeping changes. One of these big sweeping changes was we follow the National Incident Management System, which I'll refer as NIMS, and in that paperwork is NIMS. Basically, what is, what they wanted us to do is, is you have responders from different places in a big incident, we all speak the same language, we follow the same command system. One of those other sweeping changes was joint command. So if we have a big incident in town, which again, not going to would, I hope we don't, but say we have a big tornado, it would be members of the council, Beth for sure, myself, Chief Flores, Joe, all working together mitigating the plan. It's not just one person. So they, they went away from centralized command, more of a, a team approach, which is what we really need and something like that. So this kind of generalizes that, why would we want someone like this? Actively having an active and effective EOP affects the town and protects the town in many facets. So one of them, it can be a requirement to accept some federal and state funding. It enables town management to respond proactively rather than reactively in a large-scale incident. Can protect a town from potential litigation as a result of actions or lack of actions in a large-scale incident. Back to the document itself, the document has 53 pages in the body, 70 additional pages in the independent's. I don't, again, you guys just got this today, I don't expect any action on it. I don't even know if I expect action in March. I need you guys to look at it. I have some questions. I have it digitally that I marked up a few things. One of my biggest questions is there's some in-joint command, and when we're making a decision as a town, I need to know who makes that decision. Is it town council president? Is it the town manager? Is it the clerk treasurer? Is it a member of the council? Is it the fire chief? Is it the police chief? Is it Bob Davis as the public works? I need, I need that direction from you guys. So part of that plan that you have in front of you is going to change with those directives from the council. Follow my other thing. This document itself, I borrowed from another municipality. We sent it for peer review. We compared it to other municipalities. I feel this is a complete document, and if we review it biennially, it will serve the town for years to come. Again, I do not expect this to, any action in March unless you guys have a plethora of time that I don't think anyone else does, unless all members have time to review. However, this project has been done for some time. It was one of the things that the council asked when I was appointed. I've had it done, we've looked at it, it fell on the wayside. I just don't want it to fall on the wayside again. It's something that the town needs, something that we need. Now that I have momentum, that I'm in front of you, I just want to keep it going. So let's, let's do whatever you guys tell me I need to do to it. I don't mind amending it, I'll share it to you digitally. I just don't want this to fall to the wayside. It's, it's super important for the town. So I talked about the procedural questions. I would like to relate to this too, as on, and I've talked about this at some management level meetings we have here in the town. I think it's very important that some members of the town, the council, some other management level get the NIMS training. I know for certain that Chief Flores and I both have NIMS 300 and 400, which is the command level, but if we do have a, a, a large-scale incident where we bring members of this council, Beth for sure will be in there again controlling the finances. We need everyone to have that training. Something again, that I can't mandate, I think the council should consider that, but NIMS training is very important. Other municipalities in the area have all their, council has it, clerk treasurer has it, every management level employee has it as well, so.
What's the term, the time requirements, Kevin?
So, so NIMS is super fun. It's a federal government acronyms, so is, there's, there's NIMS 100, 200, 700, and 800.
You said you're recommending management take a, a course, or you're not taking all of them, just, which one do you recommend?
All of them. So NIMS 100, 200, 700, 800 are the prereq levels.
What are the time requests?
Those are all self-paced study you could do online.
But in your, in your own mind, what's, what's the time?
FEMA says each of them take three to four hours, just for those classes.
So you're looking at 12?
Just for those, if you, if you are a quick study and go through. It's easier for people like myself and Chief Flores, because this is what we deal with all the time. Some of those acronyms and everything else, I, I don't know if it'll be that quickly. I'm just telling you their guidelines.
I was just curious as to what kind of time it's going to require.
Yeah, then 300 and 400 are level classes that we would bring someone in from the federal government to teach that, and those are two days itself. It's, again, I'm not, I'm not in the position to require anyone to do anything. It's just a suggestion. It goes hand in hand with this.
Well, and you also have on here for the town manager, police chief, fire chief, public works director, town attorney, clerk treasurer, and IT director for, for that. And I think that's really kind of your core group.
Yeah, that's my suggestion, and again, I, I don't think we withhold the members of the council for that either. It would be up to, I mean, you guys all have jobs as well. Those people that I mentioned there are fortunate enough to-
I think I have a few already from when I was on the fire department.
Yeah, you, you have 100, 200, 700, 800. I looked.
Yeah, so you're, you're set.
That's very impressive.
800 A and B.
How much do you remember, Mike?
All of it.
All of it.
All of it. And the document there will help you guys. So again, this is just like giving it to you guys. It was something that I was tasked to do. It, it works with a lot of the other things we have, but again, heaven forbid, something here happens in town and we do not have this document. I'd rather be proactive than reactive. Chief Flores and I already work well together. We're going to be working well tomorrow at an event that Joe will talk about a little bit later. It, it's not one person anymore. It's joint command, and it takes a team, takes a village. It really does, and this is a town. It takes a town.
So this document, then, before we do anything with it, you'll have looked at it. Chief Flores will have looked at it. Bob Davis as well?
I could send it to whoever. So, so right, right now, Chief Flores and I have, have reviewed the document. We have our own independent SOGs and general orders that the safety commission has approved. I don't even mind bringing this to them, but part of this is out of their realm a little bit because I need to know who's in charge here. It involves, involves everyone. I, I think this is a project-
Okay.
-that I'm now queefing to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this was one of the things that we, we met when I, after I first started, that I asked, where's the EOP? And he said, well, we got one from 1996. And I'm like, well, we really need to update that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds right.
Yeah.
Any questions on the EOP? Because I'm next too.
And thank you for doing this.
Yeah, and I could send it digitally. I think the digital copy would be easier for me to send because on the side I have the notes for you, so you could answer some of the questions I have there, and we could all mark it up together and make it a working document that we could fine-tune and-
There's no PowerPoint for this, is there?
You want a PowerPoint? I can make you one.
No, no, I don't want you working.
No, there, there isn't, but of all jokes aside, it, it is a pretty important document.
No, no, no. My question was, was there a PowerPoint presentation for this, or the courses?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So for, for NIMS?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that I could lead you to. You're going to have to sign up for FEMA Federal SSID, Student Identification Number, your permanent ID for that, then you could log into the classes. Don't, don't do anything unless I tell you which classes to take, because there's a plethora, and I'm sure that they're all fun, but I'd really just take the ones that you would need to help the town and you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kevin.
Do you want any, sit down and come back up, or?
No. We're in on you next.
All right. So, so the next one I have is emergency service billing. So this, this is something that I wanted to bring before the town council and have you guys think about. It's another revenue stream that we could possibly use. So this company would, would in my suggestion be used to bill just our insurance companies on fire-related incidents only, to recoup part of the expenses related to those fire incidents. I've included all the documentation from ESBC to include the state codes that are relevant to this, that allows the fire departments to do this in towns. Sample ordinances, which again, way above my, my league, it's something that you guys would have to look at with, with Attorney Westlin, which we would need the town to have an ordinance because there's a lot of volunteer fire departments could do this. We are a combination department, so we have paid members, we have PUC members, which is volunteer, but they're paid for their time. If we have a town ordinance, we fall underneath the IC code that allows us to do this billing. Some area departments that do use this company, Crown Point, Maryville, Lowell, Hebron, Lakedale, Morocco, Four Seasons, and Chesterton. Dyer does this have, Dyer does have this on their agenda for this month to approve this very same contract for something that they're going to do as well. So some of the workflow here, ESBC would handle the billing. They would contact with, they'd make contact with the insurance companies, they'd handle the collections, and then returning the collected funds to the town. All the FD would have to do is obtain insurance information, which is what we do typically. We don't do it on traffic accidents, but my friends like Darrell and Beck, they do that. So we would be able to get the information from PD or the driver itself, themselves, get that information included in our report. Our reporting software has the capability to create a supplement report that would add this information, so we would just print that fire report, that supplemental report, and send it to ESBC, and they would do the billing. They would contact the, the insurance company and handle it with them.
Yeah, this would not, just, just so everyone knows, this doesn't cover ambulance billing at all.
That's my next thing. This is vastly separate than ambulance billing.
Yeah.
Okay, so this wouldn't be anything that Amanda does for ambulance billing. It has nothing to do with ambulance insurance companies. This is, where, where we would see any cost benefit for the town would be car accidents typically and fires. But that's what this is. I would request that the town council consider this funding opportunity, and I'd have to work with Beth on that, but maybe place funds in appropriation similar to the PD forfeit, PD seizure and forfeit, and maybe that would come back and we could offset some of the, the general fund balance that you give to the town or give to the fire department with their. ESBC does state it takes about a year, year and a half to start seeing some funds coming in that are tangible.
So we would bill people for?
Not people.
Well, insurance companies for going out.
Well, to me, ES, ESBC is, allows people, allows contracts, you could bill the individual citizen. You could decide if you want to bill a, a in-town rate, similar like we do for ambulance. You could do an in-town rate, a resident rate, a guest rate. I don't know how I feel about that. My suggestion would be just to bill insurance companies, and if the insurance company tells ESBC not to, or now they're not going to do it, we're, we're not going after joke you citizen. But yes, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, that's all I have.
So if it's not too much trouble, is it possible to put together, just maybe as from 2022, just some type of document showing what, what, if we had had passed this last year, what we would, what our revenue would have been?
I could try, but I don't know the, the number. So ESBC goes down to the point of billing for people by rank, so I'm the fire chief. If I was at a call, I'm worth X amount. If we use two brooms, it's worth X amount. If you used oil dry to clean up a spill, it's worth X amount. I could ask, I don't know if they'll give it to me because I'm not, we haven't signed the contract yet, but I could try.
Yeah, that would be great.
Not a problem.
And we're not going to hold it to them, but something that gives us some rough idea.
Yeah, like a tangible idea.
Yeah, that would be great.
I, I think it's important too, to know that they could bill, and then they're the ones that fight the insurance and talk to the insurance. I don't know if they always get 100% collections, but they handle it. It's totally off our plate. It's another benefit I, I feel to this company versus others. But I will work on that, Mike.
Okay.
In your opinion, Kevin, is it, is it worth it for the town to even spend the time it takes to look into this?
I, I feel it's worth it. It's another revenue stream, so I mean, I'm going to pick on the fire department because it's the company, the department that I represent. We already talked about, we have an $820,000 fire truck coming. I don't think I'm going to get 820,000 out of this, okay? But if I could offset that a little bit?
Well, no, no, I was curious if it was worth the time and effort-
Oh, yeah.
-for just this dais and the town people who will be involved in it.
I, I feel it's 100% worth it.
Okay, no, no, I'm, I'm looking for your opinion.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't have, I, I waited for a while. I knew about this company, I used it in previous places where I worked. I'm just trying to think outside the box to help the entire town.
You know, maybe an easier way, if it was okay with, instead of maybe what our revenue was, one of those other towns are already doing it?
Yeah, I could ask Crown Point.
Maybe they can show us what they, you know, maybe-
Crown Point, Maryville, Chesterton for sure.
If that was easier.
Yeah, not a problem. I'll, I'll look into ours. I could at least tell you how many vehicle crashes we had, and then we could go from there, because that's really what we're going to see.
Find a comparative with the other municipalities that we're neighbors with or you're aligned with to be able to call them and say, hey, you know, what kind of accident rate you have and, you know?
The closest geographically would be, would be Crown Point, but Crown Point and Maryville, the closest geographically, they're not true brothers and sisters compared to. Like if, if a Dyer had it already last year, I would, I would definitely steal their numbers and feel confident giving it to you then. Sherrville doesn't do this, so I can't do them, and Cedar Lake does not, so I don't think I have a-
Do you have a mental, a mindset that would give you the opportunity to compare apples to apples? Let's say, who's the closest municipality to St. John as far as number of accidents or however you want?
I think Chesterton would be our, our closest, on this list would be our closest. Chesterton.
Okay.
I think would be our closest.
Well, I don't know if there's any one town that would be the same. What this does is it bills insurance companies, it'd bill your car insurance company for when you get a car wrecked, it'll sweep up the gas or whatever. Right now, the town pays for it out of the tax revenues, so.
It helps us recoup, like, so like Mike said, it helps me recoup those little things. Like we have oil dry, so I get in an accident and I, we spill gasoline, fuel, we're spending that out of our, our general budget already. So if I could get, to me, if I get $300 a year to pay for my oil dry, we're ahead, in my opinion.
That was my question, basically, is in your opinion, or any other municipality's opinions, is it worth the effort to actually get involved in this?
I, I believe so, and-
No, no, that's, that's what's important is a professional opinion.
Yeah, and I think our software, we're learning it a little bit better and we're capturing the power of that. If we could automate things, where just, if Mike, when he's on the fire department, says he goes to a fire call, it pops up this extra thing he has to fill out, it's going to be there. We just print it, we send it digitally too.
Any other questions?
Yep, one last quick question. This is not going to cost us anything.
No.
Okay, but we had zero collections. We're not on the hook for five grand or vows.
No, and ESBC, ESBC takes a cut of what they collect before they issue us a check.
Sure, sure. So but there is no cost to us in case there's nothing collected?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be curious to hear the feedback from Chesterton if you field or if.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't mind the phone call away. I can handle that.
Sure, not a problem.
Easiest thing I've done all day.
Without any objection from the council, I'd like to send us to legal to have them start looking at the ordinance and talk to Beth about whether we need to have a separate fund for this or stuff like that. So if there's no objection, then we can move forward on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Alright, next is the special use variance. At 145 Earl Drive, this is for that proposed indoor storage facility. Last month, we didn't have any action. Well, we deferred it. So it'll be back on the agenda in two weeks. So again, you'll.
Yeah, is there, I mean, if the council wants to talk about it, you know, now, I think, you know, now would be a good time. As Attorney Westland said, if the council doesn't take any action, it is automatically approved at that point. So if it's the desire of the council to deny the,
Request.
The use variance, then, you know, that, then it's done. If they want to approve it, then, you know, they can either make a motion to approve it at the next council meeting or do nothing and then it would automatically get approved. But this came to the council, just so you know, with a, well, unfavorable recommendation, yeah, so.
BGA.
Yeah.
But if we don't do anything at this next meeting, then it just automatically, so this meeting, you're going to have to make a decision, one way or another, how we're going to go with that.
And this is the last, this is the last meeting that action is possible.
Correct.
Unless you have a special meeting.
Yeah, unless there's a special meeting.
Special meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, because it would have to be April 18th, I believe, somewhere about there. Oh, here we go. April 17th, my bad. It's right on there.
Alright. It'll be on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
In two weeks. Alright, next, request to purchase SCADA software for Wonderware.
Again, this was on the council's agenda at the last meeting. Put it on for this, this agenda for discussion. I would have a motion on the next council meeting agenda just separately for this request to purchase, if that's what the council wants to do.
It would have to be separate, none of the rest of the?
Well, I think if we're going to do a vote on it separate, I think it would be a good idea to have it as a separate motion, if there's people that are not in support of it.
Yeah, you know, and I'm the one that had a trouble with this. And it's not with the company itself or the product they have. I just feel I was misled with the SCADA system in general because one of the reasons was stated why we went with this SCADA system was that nothing was proprietary. And here I am looking at a proprietary component of the SCADA system and that does not match with what I was told. So I just want to be clear that this is, I do not have a problem with the company. I understand this product is needed now that it's a component of the SCADA system that we bought at, you know, triple the price. But I'm upset. I'm upset about this.
So I have a question. Why is this before us and not at Water or Sanitary where the SCADA system is supposed to serve? I mean, the SCADA system was part sanitary, part water. Why is this coming to us?
Good question.
Jerry, if you, if we go back, the only RTPs that you guys wanted or requested to go to the Water Board were those that affected the bond, Swata Fund 6105, and you guys kept all the other RTPs for 61 Water and wastewater. But you do bring up a good point because that is questioned a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I would think this would come out of the bond.
I don't think that was discussed for the bond when we got the bond.
Well, it's part of the SCADA system.
But they keep labeling everything for the SCADA system.
It's a yearly renewal too.
Yeah, it's yearly, yeah. And it's been yearly for a while, hasn't it, Jason?
It's been a yearly renewal. Well, the contract lapsed back in 2008, 2009. We got it back in maybe 2010. So it's a 13-year, 12-year renewal and then one year was the re-buy-in, so.
Like an upgrade kind of re-buy-in? Was it a new version?
Oh, yes. Once the contract expired, we had to start from scratch. So we had to pay the full purchase price of the original software and then we've just been paying the maintenance costs for it since then. And I would like to say that the current contract we have is no longer offered. We actually own the licenses. So if you decide not to renew it, the SCADA system will maintain the current version we have and then once the server dies, we would be up a creek without a paddle. If we decide to renew in the future, the only contracts they have available are subscription-based models. So those types, unfortunately, you will either pay and if you don't pay, your system stops working, so.
I understand that. I'm still questioning why it's town council business and not utilities.
Well, this is a water utility. It's not out of the, out of the district. Isn't that correct?
So in other words, they want to use the money that we provide them instead of their, instead of their revenues?
They're using, yeah, utility money, not tax money.
Right.
If I'm looking at this correctly. But it should, Jerry brings up a good point. You should really look at these RTPs because, not that I know exactly if it should or shouldn't, but I have also always questioned why, if you have a board overseeing utilities and districts, why does the council approve the RTP and not that board? But honestly, that's just the way it's always been.
Okay.
Not that that's the correct answer, but it's just the way it's always been.
Appropriation, it says you will hear.
It's, so 6101 Water Utility, 6202 Wastewater Utility, and then the department numbers just change based on wells and things of that nature.
What is the proper procedure, Beth, in your opinion?
I think based on your purchase policy, you could go either way. So it's going to have to be a policy decision that the council.
So it becomes policy and not your department's policy. It would be the council's policy or the town.
Correct. This would be a council policy decision on if you want to move these types of RTPs to the Water and Sanitary boards or keep them where you're at.
Well, I was looking for a professional opinion.
Is this signed off by the Water Board before it comes to us?
Mm-mm.
So they know.
Because here's where it goes. So if you want to talk, your purchase policy says that the town council has to approve expenditures 4,000 and up.
Correct.
So, but then your boards, certain boards act as its own body.
Your own authority.
Correct. So that's kind of where you, you get into a gray area on should the RTP go to the council first for approval or should you flip-flop it and have it go to the appropriate board for approval? And then it gets even kind of more hairy because we have some, the Water Bond 6105 going directly to the Water Board and you guys don't see those. So we're kind of, that was at the request of the council.
So it's a mess.
It's a mess. So having consistency on how you choose to do utilities regardless of the funding source of those utilities would probably be best. It's just a policy decision from the council on what you consider to be best practice.
How long did they kick it back? In other words, what, how many years back did they change the policy? Do you recall?
I started in 2016 and the council was already, always.
So it could have been in a cherry syrup.
It was probably, I think it's always been that way. I mean.
Okay.
So I have one more question. I'm sorry. So if we approve this next, at the next meeting, if I was sitting on the Water Board, are you town council telling me that I have to spend my money on something you approved and I don't get a chance to?
But that's how it's always been though, to Beth's point.
I'm asking it. I don't care if it's always been.
Right.
It doesn't mean it's the right way of doing things.
Well, that's the point I was driving at. Just because it's always been done that way doesn't mean it's proper or correct.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And I think it goes back to the way that, the way that the structure of the utility boards was put in place, whereas the town owned the utility and then the districts came after the fact.
Yeah, it's definitely a policy decision on the council's part. So something maybe you should look into on how you want to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next, we have a list of 11 request to purchases. Will be on the agenda next week or in two weeks.
Yeah, and we may still have some before Friday, just in case. So those will get sent out. But these are what we have as of, as of now.
They're pretty standard, Joe, from the looks of it. There's nothing out of the ordinary, so Jason, or for you, you know? Joe, anything out of different? Okay. So basically, it's just. This is here so you can look at them and, right, run it a mill. Two weeks, you'll either want to buy it or not.
Deal or no deal, right?
Deal or no deal, yeah.
Sounds like a TV program.
That's pretty much what it is.
Yep. That way, at the council meeting, there won't be any.
Nope.
Questions about the request to purchases.
That's right.
Unless more are added.
And after Friday, I would think only add emergency ones.
Yeah, I mean, by Friday, there might be a few stragglers that are coming in between now and Friday. And we'll push those out as, if we get anything on by Friday, we'll have those to you guys so you guys can ask any questions on those.
Alright.
Sensible.
Yep.
Joe, you have some things?
Yeah, just, just some quick updates for the council. So Arbor Day is going to be coming up. We'll have a proclamation for Arbor Day at the next council, on the council agenda. It's actually on April 28th this year, but we wanted to make sure that we had enough time because there's only like two days from the council meeting to Arbor Day. So the Parks Superintendent wanted to make sure that we got that done. Included on the very back end of your packet, there was a move to Illinois, or excuse me, move to Indiana from, from Illinois. This came as a favorable recommendation from the EDC to help market toward families and businesses to relocate to St. John. We'd have another community where the town would be profiled on this, this move to Indiana program. This is something that the Northwest Indiana Times has been promoting as a separate entity of themselves. So, and they've had some really good success. There's several communities that have joined onto this and this was, again, coming to you from the EDC and I don't, Mike, if you wanted to kind of talk on that too.
Sure, sure. So I think, I think we're looking for more, I think we're looking for more tools for economic growth for St. John and this is one of them. They came in, so BN came in and presented to the EDC several months ago. And so the EDC has been considering this since then. And I, you know, and come to the conclusion, this is something not only we're doing and Crown Point is, you know, not that we want to do it, but Crown Point, Dyer, you know, and Sherrville, other, and I think Cedar Lake is doing it well. This is something that other thriving towns are using for economic growth and it's been successful. So we would like to use a tool like this as well, you know. That was the conclusion they came to.
We had a campaign, I think it was a couple of years ago when St. John was open for business.
Yeah.
I remember, you know, they had a big marketing.
Like it. Got to keep it going, right? We need those twos and three percent property tax receipts for town services. We need those. We need more.
And plus, we've got more commercial opening up than ever before. And it's all got to be generating revenue for the town.
That's right.
Is there a cost for this, to do it?
There is. There's, there's a $5,000 sponsorship and they, they go up to, I think, 10 or 10x or higher.
Or is it sponsorship pitch?
Last page.
Last page.
On the.
Oh, okay, I'll read it.
Remember which one EDC was.
They recommended the five.
The five, right.
Yeah.
So I thought.
Who do we pay the money to? Who's it through?
Well, this goes through.
Back to that.
This company. Yeah, this goes through the Northwest Indiana Times. So it was for a silver sponsorship.
Is that the five grand?
Mm-hmm. And they'll have customized landing page and stuff like that. So they'll have analytical data about the town included on there. So they were, they had a really good presentation for the EDC, so.
If they're calling silver, is there a gold and a bronze or?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm sure there is, but I'm curious.
They probably got a platinum in here.
Yeah.
On the back page.
Diamond and salt, yeah, alright. It's right there. It's right in front of you.
So.
That's right, exactly. Platinum, there you have it, right?
Anybody have any other questions?
So I'll have, I'll have an RTP on that, just so you know, for Friday.
Why wasn't it on here then?
I want to discuss it with the council.
Anybody else got anything?
Just a couple of final things here. So working on draft strategic plan for the town of St. John. Be asking the council to approve that after they've had time to review it, make any recommendations on that. We'll also be working on the five-year plan with Senator Dalton and the Clerk Treasurer to get the town's five-year capital improvement plan updated and completed. We'll be having meetings with the Clerk Treasurer and then following that, we'll have meetings with the department heads to review that and then we'll present that at the study session. Student Government Day, I'm very pleased to bring that back to the town of St. John. We're looking forward to celebrating the day on April 26th. The eighth grader students from the St. John, from the town of St. John are being asked to participate in this event to write an essay, why is St. John a town you can call home? We've already reached out and gotten positive responses from Lake Central Schools. We've waiting responses from Hanover, St. John the Evangelist, and some of the other private schools as well. We're also inviting the eighth grade students who are homeschooled to participate. Essays must be turned into the town manager's office no later than March 27th, so that we'll have adequate time to get these judged. Winners will be announced on April 10th. On the morning of Student Government Day, students will be assembling here at Town Hall. We'll be giving them a tour of the Town Hall, police and fire stations, public works, and parks. After that, we'll be having a luncheon with the students and with the folks who the fire chief, the police chief have volunteered already, how about that, to take them around town. So after they've been given their luncheons, they'll be returning to their respective schools and then that evening, they'll be returning here to the town council meeting and they will be running the meeting for that evening. So we'll have the Clerk Treasurer swear them in at the beginning and hopefully we have a really good evening with these guys. So looking forward to getting this tradition kicked off and continuing this for many years to come.
What's the date, Joe?
April 26th.
Next regular.
Yeah, we thought about May, but we thought it'd be too close to the end of school year, so it probably wouldn't work well with the teachers.
What a great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Alright. Anybody else got anything? Motion to adjourn?
I think, I think Kevin's got it handled.
Oh, man.
Of course he does.
You're welcome. So just, just a reminder tomorrow that we will have a, a large-scale incident at Clark from noon to three.
Noon to three.
So.
It was on my notes too.
I just want to make sure everyone knows about that. There'll be Facebook posts, there'll be everything there, but just so the whole town knows. Thank you.
Who's going to spearhead that? Is that Sherrville or us?
It's a Lake Central, it's a Lake Central School System event that we all work together on. Takes a village.
Takes a village.
Or town. Takes a town.
Or an Indiana. A village, Kevin? Also, tomorrow, they had the, from five to seven, it'd be open to the public, the corridor study. Tuscaloosa is going to be here. And that'll be tomorrow at five, between five and seven here at Town Hall. And the corridor study, that's going to be from 109th on the east end as you come in all the way down to Calumet Avenue, then Calumet Avenue down to 101st, 101st out to Sheffield. Thank you.